For Orange Township to discuss old business zoning application Z O N dash two five dash zero three, which was continued from June. Can we please have Rob?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes, dear.
Ms. Rebellis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Zuda?
Yes.
All right. So as I mentioned earlier, this is a continuation of a previous zoning application that we heard on June 10th. We had asked the applicant to come back with some additional information because we said there were too many questions for approval at that time. I believe the applicant has come back and staff has prepared a report. So, Robin, if you would take us through that report, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Rebellis. I'm just going to briefly go through this, mostly highlighting the changes since the previous submittal. I may not go through every detail of the application since we did discuss some of those at the previous hearing, but if we do want to run anything in more depth, please let me know. So just to remind everyone, we are here to discuss rezoning case Z O N dash twenty-five dash zero-three for property located at fifty-three fifty-one North Road, there in the corner of North Road and Shanahan Road, for roughly twenty-four acres. The current zoning is Single Family Plan Residential District, or S F P R D. This is an amendment request, not a rezoning, so the applicant is requesting to amend the currently effective development plan to allow for sixty-eight single-family lots, which is a reduction from the approved development plan of seventy-nine detached single-family condominiums. I will call out your attention to the previous submittal did have sixty-five lots. This new version that you have in front of you, the request is for sixty-eight lots, so that total has increased since the previous meeting, but is still less than the seventy-nine standalone condo units that were part of the previously approved development plan. Eric, if you want, just go to the next page, please. You can see the updated site plan there, provided by the applicant. So we do now have full site plan with lot lines and building envelopes shown, which is helpful for us as we review it. The street layout has changed a little bit from the previous submittal, so now we have two cul-de-sacs and then one kind of main north road, north-south road that goes through the left-hand portion of the development there. So North Road is on the left and then Shanahan Road would be to the north here. And on the following page, you can see the previous, so the left is the previously approved plan, so that's the seventy-nine unit condominium plan, and then to the right is the proposed plan that we have before us this evening. In terms of changes from the previous submittal, so again, this use will remain single-family. This proposal is for fee simple lots, so individually platted lots that would be sold as compared to the condo units that are currently approved. The development standards, we did get some clarity on those. So the lot width is proposed to be sixty-two feet at the front line of the dwelling. That is an increase from the previous submittal, which I believe was thirty-five or thirty-seven. So it's sixty-two for all lots. That is a divergence because it is less than the lot width standard of the S F P R D of seventy-five feet. The lot depth is a hundred and twenty feet, and that is not for all lots, but it is one through twenty, lots one through twenty-six, lots forty-eight through fifty, and fifty-eight through sixty-eight out of the total sixty-eight lots. So that's, if you're counting a little over the half of, half of the lots, have that divergence request for the lot depth, which is a hundred and twenty feet instead of a hundred and thirty feet. This was one of our requests from the previous meeting that the applicant kind of outlined which lots the divergences were being applied to because as we thought, but we didn't know since we didn't have the full site plan, the divergences do not apply to every single lot. It is only those lots mentioned above. The side yard setback is proposed to be at six feet. Again, that is a divergence. That has not changed since the previous submittal, but that is less than the S F P R D standard of twelve-point-five feet. Front setback is proposed to be at twenty feet. That is an increase from the thirteen feet from the previous plan, but it is also less than the thirty-foot standard setback from local roads as defined by the zoning resolution. So it's twenty feet instead of thirty feet, and that front setback does apply to all lots. The rear yard setback is twenty-five feet, again, for those lots, one through twenty-six, lots forty-eight through fifty, and fifty-eight through sixty-eight, and then thirty-five feet for all other lots according to S F P R D standard. So ten-foot divergence for those aforementioned lots. The unit count, as I mentioned, did increase from the previous submittal, so it went from sixty-five to sixty-eight. Again, that is still eleven units less than the previously approved development plan for the condominiums. So that brings the total density down to two-point-eight-five units per acre, which again is less than the three-point-two-eight units per acre proposed under the condominium plan. The minimum square footage for each home is proposed to be at least one-thousand square feet. That's less than the previous version, which was at the last meeting proposed to be at fifteen-hundred. That has dropped to one-thousand, but that is still within the guidelines of the S F P R D, so that does not require a divergence. And then the applicant is requesting to increase the total allowable lot coverage from twenty-five percent of each individual lot area to fifty-one percent of the lot area. In terms of architectural elements, there were no changes in the text from the previous submittal. We also did not receive any updated elevations for the homes from the previous version. Because the layout changed a little bit, the open space count did change somewhat. So the new open space count is five-point-five-four acres of open space out of the twenty-three-point-nine total acreage. That's approximately twenty-three-point-seventeen percent of the site. That is greater than the S F P R D standard minimum of twenty percent. In terms of road access and connectivity, again, as I mentioned previously, the internal street layout did change slightly, which was shown on the site plan. Lighting did not change from the previous version. Signage did not change from the previous version. Vehicular and pedestrian access did not change from the previous version, but this new plan did make clear that ten-foot multi-use pathways are proposed along North Road and Shanahan Road, and then five-foot sidewalks are included on the internal streets. For landscaping, I think this was one of the big outstanding items from the previous meeting. We do now have a landscaping plan for the proposal that shows a variety of trees and shrubs to be planted. Street trees along the internal streets are included, and plannings are particularly concentrated along the North Road frontage for buffering, as well as around the retention pond on the eastern portion of the site. Also, mounding along North Road has been partially restored to the plan, which has mounding along a good section of the North Road frontage, and the frontage that does not have mounding does have additional landscaping in that area to provide a buffer from North Road. So to wrap up, going back to the number of divergences, so there's still seven. So the first is intensity of use for the density to allow for gross density of two-point-eight-five units per acre instead of two, and to allow the maximum number of dwelling units on any single acre to be six instead of three. For lot width, to allow for sixty-two feet instead of seventy-five feet. For lot depth, to allow a hundred and twenty feet instead of one-hundred and thirty feet for lots one through twenty-six, forty-eight through fifty, and fifty-eight through sixty-eight. Divergence for the side yard setback, to allow for six feet instead of twelve-point-five feet. For the front building setback, to allow for twenty feet instead of thirty feet. For the rear setback, to allow for twenty-five feet instead of thirty-five feet, and that is for the lots one through twenty-six, forty-eight through fifty, and fifty-eight through sixty-eight. And then the final is for the maximum lot coverage, to allow for fifty-one percent instead of twenty-five percent. Again, I'll just remind the commission that those divergences are from the base S F P R D text and not the previously approved development plan. That previously approved version also contained approved divergences for density and setbacks. And then for staff comments, all of our comments from the previous version have been satisfactorily addressed by the applicant. We did note that while the outdated utility letters have been removed, we did not receive new utility letters from the applicant, so those did not have new dates on them. And the one thing that we did have a minor concern about from a site layout perspective was the location of the cluster box unit, the mailbox unit, and parking, in that it is right off of the intersection with North Road there. I am not a traffic engineer. I make no claim to special understanding of this. If the Delaware County engineer says that this is acceptable, then that is acceptable, but just pointing out that the applicant may want to consider that. I don't know if they've consulted with the engineer yet at this point in the process, but something to think about as they proceed with their application. I have nothing further at this time. I'm on hand if the commission has any questions.
Does the commission have any questions for Robin?
I do, actually.
Okay.
At the last meeting, Carthick raised the issue of the front and rear setbacks. There's kind of a math problem with the depth of the lots and the houses. That's all been resolved?
Generally, yes. I mean, there are still divergences for those, but I think it was just unclear from the way the text was constructed. I think there was, there was some conflicting statements that we weren't sure if the front set, or if the depth was thirty-five feet or twenty-three feet, I believe. So that Ms., those conflicting portions of the text have been fixed. So I think at this point, the math, maths.
Do you have any?
No, I don't have any questions at this point.
Then at this time, if the applicant has a presentation, wants to walk us through the changes they made, that would be great. Remember to state your name and address because this is for the record.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Mike Shannon, attorney on behalf of the applicant, Schiff Real Estate. Jared Schiff is here. I wanted to make this user-friendly, and I know you have a lot of paperwork in front of you, but if I pass out a redline version of what was submitted for the previous meeting, it will show the changes that I can walk through very quickly because staff already did a good job of confirming that we, we've tried to address all their concerns. Would you mind sharing one of them?
Yeah.
I apologize.
Yeah, what he's saying is this is, this is the updated version, and he's redlining all the changes to make them more obvious. So...
So this document contains the majority of the changes that you requested after our last meeting, subsequent to this document. We got the landscape plan and added it. But if you go, just thumb through the text and you go to the redline areas, it will show you where we made, it will show you the redline areas. Do you have redlines in your copy?
No. Yeah, we have a couple redlines.
Not until very near the back.
Yeah.
Okay, let me see if I have the, I think I have the wrong version. I apologize.
It starts on?
Yeah, three pages.
And since there aren't page numbers, it's a little difficult.
That's three pages.
On forward. That's starting about six pages from the back. But yeah. It's actually going to be the green, the green version. And I got more divergence here than I can share, but I'm not sure I have enough to clarify. So I apologize. It's fine if you want to. So I can, I can use the text that you have, and I will use the master text to go over each of the changes. And again, my apologies. So the first thing that we clarified, obviously, is the number of units. Staff is correct that we changed that to the sixty-eight proposed units, which is still below the seventy-nine that were previously approved. You might remember, it was done as a condo development. We are trying to do it as a fee simple, single-family. The number of divergences are related to trying to transform that product into a single-family. On the third page, one, two, three, third page of the text, under permitted uses, is where we changed the number from sixty-five single-family homes to sixty-eight, and the dwelling density was, as staff mentioned, the two-point-eight-five units per acre. Then on the conditional uses, it's section ten-point-oh-four, the next section we come to, they wanted clarification that really the only permitted use is the single-family, and all other uses are conditionally permitted. That is, they'd have to come back for subsequent approval. And so we added the word conditionally throughout the text. Then we go, get my summary sheet Then, in the following order, we made these changes. The, the lot divergences that staff indicated was cleaned up, and I can thumb back to that section of the, my redline version. But basically, he is correct. The math didn't work out, and I've got the exact number here. He's right. In terms of the lot width, we did clarify that that divergence we asked for was for, the lot width was for all the lots, the lot width variance. The depth divergence we had to enumerate was lots forty-eight through fifty and fifty-six through sixty-eight. We then clarified that the divergence for the side yard was for all lots. Then we also noted the building setback consistent with the previous comments. And again, these are all listed under, I'll give you the section number. Again, that's still under ten-point-oh-six procedure, and it's all the way down to under development plans, and it gets into B five. But the number for the lots actually goes all the way over to the next page, same section, but you'll see the lot numbers are forty-eight through fifty and fifty-eight through sixty-eight. And again, staff already covered that. The same thing was noted with regard to the rear yard. We had to specify that the divergence was twenty-five feet, again, in the same lots, forty-eight through fifty and fifty-six through sixty-eight. We did indicate the minimum square footage would be a thousand square feet, and the open space was converted as staff indicated, and it's still above the twenty percent required. It's close to twenty-three percent. I think most importantly, and the reason that we weren't ready for primetime a couple weeks ago, I do want to thank staff for working with us, and I believe the chair accommodated us with tabling an additional two weeks to get the landscape plan. We were able to get the original landscape architect, Todd Ferris, to modify the plan that he did for Aurora Farms. And I'm not a landscape architect, but the exhibit does go through and was in all packages that were hand-delivered to staff with the extensive plant list. He went to great lengths to try to use the same type of materials that he used last time, and I'm sure you probably know Todd by reputation. He's been up here on a number of occasions. So the bottom line is, is that our mission was to try to clean up all the loose ends, to be sensitive to the fact that these are divergences in the code. For your consideration, the standard for approving these variances, as you know, is a practical difficulty. I feel very strongly that all of these variances are area variances, they're developing standard variances, and as such, you don't have to show a hardship. You have to show a practical difficulty. You look at the seven dumping factors, and you balance them. It certainly is not an easy bar, not affecting the delivery of basic governmental services. It's not adversely affecting the property values of our neighbors. I think that proof is in the attendance here this evening. We have some people that might be here to discuss it, but I believe historically, I was not involved with some previous zoning. It was upon contention with our neighbors, and they have been a joy to work with in our discussions with them. They were very pleased that we were restoring the single-family product. This is a very tough site, with everything developed around it, with the railroad tracks there. I tried to get them to change Shanahan to Shannon, but that didn't seem to be very productive. But the bottom line is, we know that there is a market for the single-family homes that we're going to be building. Actually, Arbor Homes is represented in the scene as they were previously. They're the largest home builder in the Indianapolis market. Indianapolis is remarkably similar to Columbus, for those of you who are familiar with it. And they've entered the Columbus market and the Ohio market very aggressively, and this looks like a project that they're going to be interested in doing in your community. So with that, I can answer specific questions. Again, the attention to detail by your staff's been very helpful throughout this process, and I'll try to answer any questions, but that's my bill.
Okay. Does the commission have questions for the applicant?
Yes, I have some questions.
Okay, unless if you want to start, we can work our way down.
Okay, thank you. One of my questions is, I thought we'd asked for, like, the architectural plans or what the homes would look like during our last meeting.
We submitted some renderings previously, I believe, did we not?
You did. We did not receive any updated.
Yeah, I mean, I figured the size of the home is changing, right, that perhaps the...
The prospective buyer asked to have that latitude for the minimum lots, or minimum house size of a thousand square feet, but we didn't change the prototypes we're looking at or the elevations, to be honest with you.
If I remember right, you had said something in the last meeting about an A-line, a lower-end line of smaller homes that we didn't see.
I could have, I could have the Arbor Homes talk about that. You are correct. They did talk about a specific product, but I'd have to defer to them. Would you like them to address it now?
Yeah, let me ask a couple more questions.
Let, let the commission finish with the first discussion, and then if Arbor Homes wants to discuss the plans. Because that was also one of my concerns of that if these are a thousand square feet, they're small, relatively speaking, for what you normally see up here. So we wanted to make sure that you actually had models that would fit in these lot sizes.
Yeah, because the other drawings were larger than even the fifteen-hundred square foot that you said they would be, and I think they were like twenty-six-hundred, or they were much larger on the other one.
And so that led to my next question of, other than economics, what led you to, because this is like a whole new, last time we were saying, hey, make these improvements to it. We need this and that to support these pieces. It looks like you went back and redrew everything to some degree, by adding the, adding the three and then changing the size of the homes. To me, that's like a major change, right? You made the homes a third of the size. You reduced them by a third of the size, and you added three additional ones. So just real quick, other than economics, though, what was the, what drove that decision to say, hey, maybe fifteen-hundred square foot is too big, and let's go with these smaller sizes and add three more into the, into the group? I mean, I don't know, maybe you did a study or something. I'm just curious.
Per the chair's directions, I can have the developer address that. I don't think we ever had three-thousand square foot as a minimum house, but if we can...
No, no, fifteen-hundred, fifteen-hundred. So when you reduce it by a third, five-hundred, 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 reduce by five-hundred square foot.
Thank you for clarifying. I'm sorry. And they can address that when they get to the floor.
Okay. All right. And then my, my only other question was on, I'm just curious, I don't know if you did this, did this analysis or not. Without any divergence request at all, how many homes would you have been able to?
We wouldn't be here tonight. I can't tell you. We would not get forward without divergence.
Yeah, okay. All right. Those were, those were my questions.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
I think I'm reading the plot layout correctly with the boxes as soon as you turn into it.
Yes, ma'am.
So is that where you're thinking you want to keep those? Because you...
You know, I'm going to follow up on staff's comment and have the traffic engineer confirm that. I do see where it could cause concern that there's traffic coming in, and it's backed up from those parking spaces. So we were playing around with it a little bit before the hearing, and we think we have an alternate, alternate location, but we want to nail that down with the county engineer to make sure it's going to be correct.
Then I was trying, like, what is this box back here? This is your drainage spot in the back? It's kind of hard to see.
Yes, that's where, that's the retention pond.
Oh, the retention, okay. Retention ponds, okay. I was just trying to figure it out.
I'm good.
You're good? Mike, do you have questions, or?
Not at this moment.
Okay.
I, yeah, I also have a very strong concern about the viability of the location of the cluster mailbox. But I see that you can't really move it to the other side of the street because we've got easement there for water pipes.
That's correct, sir.
Yeah, so I understand the difficulty. Just as a matter of clarification, on, on C eight, coming out of the retention pond, I think there is a, there's a pipe. I'm not sure what that is. Coming up into lot sixty-four, and then heading over to the drainage pond. I'm just wondering what that is. Yeah, I'm looking on C eight.
I can't read that, I'm sorry.
No, I see what you're talking about, but I would have to consult the rest of the Civil to see what's on there, and that would also require some blowing up.
Yeah, I can only speculate, to be honest with you. That's like a storm going into the drainage pond, but I can confirm that with the Civil.
I mean...
Yeah, it's either an outlet going from the pond into, my guess is that it's an outlet going from the pond into an easement that's not shown because it's not on this property, but it would be on the railroad property. So it's either that or it's something...
I mean, it does appear to be a storm.
Yeah.
Because it looks like there are several inlet basins along it, and there are two more of the same similar storms with inlet basins along, it looks like the north.
Yeah, I see, coming, coming up between nine and ten and in the middle of sixteen.
Exactly, along, along North Road, because there's a temporary drainage easement there and a drainage easement. So I'm assuming Civil is going to have to work with the county to figure out the storm sore. So generally, we rely on the county engineers and y'all's, your engineers to figure out the storm. We understand that this is just schematic until final engineering is done. So if...
Jared pulled it up on the screen for me. I have some vision and pyramids, so that helps a lot.
Would that prohibit having basements in those lots?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, actually, do you want to?
Deal?
Yeah, he should stand up.
And I can clarify one point. Your point, I get it now, one to fifteen to a thousand. The house, the minimum size house that they would build would be thirteen-hundred square feet. So we'd be willing to change it to twelve-fifty in the text to address that concern.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right. And then the only questions I have are mostly for your consultants in terms of, I know we had concerns to make sure that the house prototypes would fit on these smaller lots, so if you could review that. The question about going from sixty-five to sixty-eight units based on your house models... The question about going from 65 to 68 units, based on your house models, if you could clarify the storm. And I also do have concerns about the location of the mailboxes, because they are right by the entry where people enter and exit, and I know people are going to pull up, park in those parking spots. I'm concerned that someone is going to back out into someone entering or exiting the subdivision. I would move them, like, maybe closer to where the storm basin is, or to where one of the cul-de-sacs were. Perhaps not as ideal and convenient if you're driving in and out of the neighborhood, but less likely to cause an accident entering or exiting the neighborhood. Yeah, and if, like I said, if your consultants can come up, name and address, because it is for the record, and if you can explain some of these items, that would be great. Thank you.
Hi, Drew Miller, 6797 North High Street, Worthington, Ohio. I'm with Arbor Homes, I'm not one of the consultants, I'm with the home builder.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, I just want to clarify a couple things, questions you all had and what Mr. Shannon said. So we will be offering our Arbor Series product in this neighborhood. There's 14 different floor plans that customers can choose from, and each one of those has about nine different elevations that they can choose from, too. So there's going to be a lot of variety and character in this neighborhood. The minimum square footage of that Arbor Series is 1,300 square feet, the largest one, I believe, is 3,200. So the average square foot, I misspoke last time about which product we were offering here, but the average square foot, I think, would be right around 2,500 square feet.
What's the standard building footprint? Because I'm assuming we're talking one and a half, two stories, when you're discussing the square footage.
Yeah, so that Arbor Series, it comes in a ranch floor plan and a two-story floor plan. Customers can choose to put in a basement if they want, we don't offer them off the bat, but if they want to upgrade for those, we can build those. The lot sizes, we did incorporate on plan, so that's how, you know, we verified, we're confident that each one of those 14 floor plans will fit on any single lot.
I think I missed something. You said the minimum is 1,300 square feet for the house, and then the average is 2,500?
Yes, correct.
Okay. But there's nine elevations in 14 plans.
That's correct.
Of Arbor Series.
That's what I meant to say.
No, I will say one comment about the mailbox location, because, you know, that's very common in the neighborhoods that we build nowadays, everybody has to have a cluster mailbox. The past five years of my life, I've been, I was actually a developer working for Sheetz Gas Stations, and so I'm very familiar with queuing and what, you know, parking spaces look like in entrances and next to main roads. I can confidently say that the size of this neighborhood is very small compared to what we build. Of course, we leave it to the engineer's opinion, but we're comfortable with where that location is. I'm comfortable with it, knowing the volume of traffic that would be entering and exiting this neighborhood.
Just real quick, I may be absolutely making this up, but I, and I guess you didn't put it as different. So I thought there was two entrances or something last time. Is it only just one? Always been just one?
There are two. So there's the main one by the cluster box unit on North Road, and then there's a stub, it's on the left side of the screen there, the top-left portion of the screen, that stubs into the existing hippie lane, which is just...
Oh, that's going to be the, okay.
That hasn't changed.
So that's going to connect to...
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So the Lot 57, the dotted lines, is there going to be a green space next to the 57?
So that's the one at the curve?
Yeah, that would be part of that homeowner's yard. What that dotted line is showing is the setback.
Or a location for cluster mailboxes.
Yes.
Just saying, that's a space where that would fit.
Yeah.
We have gotten creative with locating those mailboxes before, so I'm confident we can find a location for it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I had identified as well.
So I would look into the feasibility of that. Mike, do you have any questions?
Mark, actually.
Oh, sorry.
That's quite okay. I'm looking at the landscaping plan, D1, and looking at the condo rendering, color rendering of the landscape plan. It looked like there was like a solid buffer of trees between the railroad tracks and what are now Lots 59 through 68. And now, D1 is showing two trees in the backyard of 68, and all the other backyards run right into the railroad tracks with no buffer at all. Is that the current plan?
The problem we had with replicating that is it literally takes up almost the entire backyard of these houses. I see what you're saying, but we were trying to announce what the homeowner would want. If they want that buffering, it's going to significantly compromise their backyard. We're not adverse to putting it in if you're going to make it a condition of approval. I thought that might be of some concern. Again, that's what makes this site very difficult, is those railroad tracks.
Oh, I understand. My thinking was, just from a safety perspective, it might be better to have a privacy fence, which would not take up half the backyard, and would keep small children from running out onto the railroad tracks.
That would be much more acceptable, certainly.
That was one of my comments as well. If this is going to be a neighborhood, especially with children and small children, with backyard swing sets and things like that, I would have concerns with children playing on the railroad tracks.
Do we know what they have next door, right now, anywhere?
I do not.
No.
You mean the Rockford Homes?
Yeah, but they, but I believe they...
The way the planning is a little bit different than this one. I believe the cul-de-sac is the very closest one, like four, five homes closest to the railroad.
Okay.
So this is going to be more homes closer to the rail, backing up the railroad, but those are not.
Yes, I'm assuming that is correct, there are no homes in that area that back up directly to the railroad tracks.
And they also have, I'm assuming, our single-family home required yard setbacks and depth, so it wouldn't be as tight.
Yeah.
In that case, I guess, like, the whole, all the lots, like, starting from...
Yeah, 59 through 68.
Yeah, so I think, like, if there could be a wall of trees or something from the builder...
Yeah, what he's saying is they just can't squeeze the trees in there without removing basically the entire backyard. But a fence would be thin enough that it could provide that kind of buffer, like safety...
The other issue is there are practical difficulties from a zoning standpoint of requiring the perpetual maintenance of trees on private residential property. So when it's on HOA land, that's much easier to enforce from a zoning standpoint, but since, you know, if we were talking about trees that are required to be planted and maintained on residentially, you know, individually owned properties, that is much more practically difficult.
Well, part of it technically could be or will be HOA land, because I'm assuming that is what the green space and the retention pond is going to be considered.
Yes, the green space, yes.
So I think we're all in agreement.
Well, there's development at Lewis Center Road, right before North, or right at the corner of North, I think there are rentals, I don't know what they are, and the people, to me, it's like they sit on their back door, and there's the training right there. You know what I'm talking about, the little white bubble? I don't think they have any.
But I also believe that...
Isn't that elderly or something?
Exactly.
You guys so elderly can sit by the tracks?
Yeah, but the concern is kids. The concern is in neighborhoods and kids, and that's what they take their kids. Now, if the elderly want to go ahead and go on stairs, fuck yourself out, go walk on over there. You know, you get hit, we'll miss you, okay?
Well, I'm bound to answer.
And to be clear, there are no requirements for any kind of buffer between, you know, property and railroad tracks, just like there's no requirement for a buffer between, you know, a home and a public street, right?
Yeah.
Like, for the safety...
But I think it would be a very good idea.
Yes, I agree.
Some sort of fence that a kid is not going to be able to get through or over.
You would agree to a board-on-board six-foot fence?
Yeah.
For that entire perimeter?
Eight would be better, but...
I think that would require, I have six foot is what it generally provides.
Mm-hmm. I think we could live with six.
Yeah, six is...
Yeah, something, some...
Six is relatively standard, and the kid's not going to be able to climb over it.
Well, not with the razor wire on top. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Robbie, just that...
Would you agree to do that, or would you make it a condition of approval, whatever, for protocol?
Robbie, just as a note, is that something that we can, should we, or maybe it's a question, should we revisit that railroad story before the finalization of a new? No, we've already, we've already...
Oh, yes, we did.
Okay.
But it's coming back to us, though.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Does the commission have any other questions for the applicant?
I do have one.
Okay.
So what am I looking at here? Sorry, folded it up so I can't see. C7, and I was looking at that overlaid with C6, which, given the high-quality paper that we use, made that very difficult. You can't see through these things. My concern has to do with preservation of existing trees, which is something that in the text, it said every effort would be made to do that. There is something identified as woods that's right around 37, and going out into the street from the front yard there. So I can't imagine that we'll be able to preserve any of those trees. Maybe I'm wrong.
I mean, we can try, but I can't guarantee it, sir.
Yeah.
I apologize.
And then there's a large tree line that extends basically from 32 straight to 65. Yeah, and those are shown pretty clearly on C6.
Yeah, I think the earlier version had that really very clear.
So we're pulling up the aerial on the screen there.
Yeah.
The site is pretty well clear.
It is. It is.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's, over the years, it has continued to be cleared, so...
Okay. So what we're saying is there really aren't any significant existing trees to be preserved.
I don't believe so.
Not to be preserved, yeah.
All right.
But you can see pretty well the existing retention basin and swales for drainage.
What's the...
If the commission has no more questions for the applicant, I would like to open the floor to public comment.
I have one additional question, at least. Signage, where's the signage going, the monument sign going to be placed? I don't see it marked on here, it says no change from the previous, but I don't know.
Yeah, so I don't believe that, it may have been on the landscape plan. I don't believe a specific location was...
I think I do see it on D1.
It's also on D2.
So the example of the sign is on D2.
Yeah, just to the, just to the right of the subdivision entrance, right here.
Did we have some concern about its location last time or something? Being able to see, am I mixing that up?
Development on South Oak State.
Okay, that's something else. Okay, no worries. I'm mixing it up and something else. All right, sorry about that. And the, the space between each home, could we...
Oh, yeah.
What's the footage between each home?
12 feet.
12 feet, so six foot.
They're six foot from the property line.
Yeah, yeah. And that is, that is shorter than what we, yeah?
Oh, it's, it's quite a, quite a significant shrinkage from what we would normally require.
Like half.
But I think we have a couple of reasons to let that go through. One being that trying to find starter homes in Lewis Center, practically impossible. These are going to be of a size and price that would allow first-time home buyers...
We don't know the price, there may not be as much start as we think it is.
Well, that's true, but people are going to pay so much for small houses on very small lots.
What is the price range?
I don't know exactly, but I would say...
Starting price?
Yeah, base price, 350 maybe, and then that could go up depending on 350, and then depending on the model, floor plan that they choose, it could go up to 400.
Starting 350 with the basement?
Without a basement.
With the basement?
That would be no basement.
No basement, oh.
People have an option, I thought, to get a basement.
Yeah, but starting 350 without a basement.
I see.
Yeah.
Well, 20 years.
That seems expensive.
It does seem expensive, and...
Especially given these size lots right on railroad tracks.
Yeah.
But maybe the economics of people will say, I'm not about to pay $350,000 for that little bitty house with all them people, six foot of space between the two, and at the end of the day, it's great, really want to be in Lewis Center, but I'm going to move somewhere else.
Well, it takes you goals.
So maybe the market will dictate that, I mean, that's real good for them.
Right. We're not in the business plan and L. S. area here.
Yeah, that's up to them, yeah.
I can't say that Arbor Homes, we are a mission-backed company to be the price leader in single-family home building. So really, our target customers are the first-time home buyers. Our goal is to get as many people in houses, especially those people who didn't think that they could afford it. So, you know, honestly, some of the divergences that we're asking here for today, I know economics for us or the developers isn't always a thought, but when it comes to those first-time home buyers, the things that we can approve and the denser we can get and closer we can keep these houses, the cheaper starting price we're going to be able to offer.
So the people who buy Lot 57 or Lot 45 have the bigger lot sizes, it appears.
Yeah, so those, the prices per lot will vary.
Oh, yeah, I know, we build our house, I know how it works. But they're just close together, but, I mean, we're not a New Yorker, Chicago, or anything like that, but that's how they are in places like that.
Yeah, I mean, some people are going to consider that a feature.
Yeah.
They don't want to have to pay somebody $50 a week like I do to move it along.
So you can, you can open up to the audience if you wish.
So, Madam Chair, just general comments. You know, I have been doing this way too long, 44 years, but I, obviously, nobody has seen anything like the housing crisis that's going on in central Ohio, which includes Franklin County and the contiguous counties, but central Ohio is growing 104 people a day. I do not know of a new single-family subdivision of houses this old that you can buy for 350, 365,000 dollars. Sounds obnoxiously high, but that is... Sounds obnoxiously high, but that is your new starter home if you're going for new construction. The fact of the matter is, is that this, this is an underserved population, we think. We do think that these will be priced a little bit less than what the neighborhood originally sold for. But we do think that this is a tremendous community to be a part of. And so many people are marginalized or kept out of this market because the houses start well above that. And we see these as being family-oriented. I happen to know Drew from his, his previous lifetime with Skilken Company. And my firm actually, it's a coincidence, I didn't even know it, my partner is doing a lot of work for Arbor. And they are mission-based, and their reputation in Indianapolis is, is stellar. So they have looked at the market, and they have seen this as a very valuable diamond in the rough, if you will. Despite the fact that you've got railroad tracks and you've got other limitations, yet the quality of life up here is phenomenal. And it's different than in central Ohio. Doesn't necessarily make it better, but it makes it appeal to a different market. And we honestly think that these would be priced such that there would be no phased development. This would go up virtually very quickly. I would quote their construction schedule, but I would guess in eighteen to twenty-four months, maybe quicker or Drew will lose his job. Because they definitely want to develop this site. They think it's developer-ready. Obviously, this is a downzoning. And if you, you want to analyze our business plan, or if we're doing this or we're doing that, if you simply look at the zoning principles, it's a downzoning. Even the previous condominium one had a lot of divergences. These rooms were packed with opposition. And we went and, your process here is interesting. You, you meet with staff, but then you have to meet with two planning commission members. And the message is, do not come in without meeting with the neighbors first. And we followed the protocol. So we respectfully request your approval this evening to move us on. If there are conditions that we haven't satisfied, we'd like you to make them conditions of your motion. But I mentioned that we only had maybe one tabling in us to meet our contractual obligations. And we've already used that due to our own fault, not your fault. But we tried to make a, a good faith effort to be responsive to everything we could. And verbatim from staff, they indicated that we addressed their original concerns. And their final three comments, I think, are noteworthy in that we've come a long way from where we were when we first started. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor to comments and/or questions from the public. So please come up, state your name and address. And, you know, if you have any comments or questions, you can address them to the commission, and then we'll give the applicant a chance to respond to them after we've gathered all the items that you all might have questions about. So please, we're excited when people are here.
He's not excited enough to stand up apparently. That's okay, that's all right. You know, when I look at this plan overall, the first thing that came to my mind was, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. This is a, this is a problem piece of property to try and squeeze houses onto. And I think you've, you've done a really good job of trying to figure out a way to do that. So a lot of compromises, but I think they're all for a good purpose.
Yeah, we also appreciate you all going back and addressing and the concerns, previous concerns that were noted and revising and updating, so we appreciate that.
So if there's no public comments, does anybody else on the commission have any final thoughts?
I, I would like to see us make the approval condition-
Condition.
On the fence.
On the fencing and relocating the mailboxes.
Yes, I would agree. I think we need three stipulations.
Yes.
One is to review the location of the mailbox unit and parking and relocate to a, dare I say, safer location pending final engineering. Number two would be the installation of a six-foot privacy fence along the railroad tracks to address safety concerns.
Yep.
And then I would also like to see, I know it appears that we had utility letters, they lapsed. I'm actually more concerned about the fire department and the turning radiuses and the cul-de-sacs. I'm assuming you all have designed them to meet standards. But I would have a stipulation that we need fire department approval for that.
And the fourth is the minimum square footage of, I think you said it was thirteen fifty.
Yeah.
Twelve fifty to give them a little, a little legal room.
What was the size? I thought it was thirteen fifty.
Thirteen hundred square footage.
It was thirteen hundred, and I asked for twelve fifty.
Okay, all right.
All right. Does the applicant agree to these stipulations? Do you have an issue with them?
Absolutely, we agree. No issue whatsoever.
Okay.
And any of the other standard approvals, such as fire department and that kind of stuff, which is-
Yeah.
And the distance between each homes, that's, it's set, right? It's going to be twelve, there is not going to be any variances depending on the plan.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's a minimum six foot.
So they're going to follow that, right?
They're gonna have to. That's why we were concerned about the unit sizes.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, once we put it in writing, you have to follow it.
I was just told that one of the fourteen iterations of the nine different elevations is twelve twenty-eight. If you put it at twelve fifty, that would eliminate one choice for a ranch. So I don't know if you want to put it at twelve twenty-eight or not. I'm sorry.
Comfortable with twelve fifty and move on.
You're comfortable with twelve fifty?
Yeah, twelve fifty, move on. That's what, that's what we got.
It's one of the fourteen options.
You got thirteen.
But that eliminates the ranch, the twelve fifty.
It doesn't eliminate any of the ranch options, which, uh-
How many ranch options do you have?
You can do the podium, please.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. You all are the experts, so you gave your number and then changed it.
There's only like four ranch plans, and so, yeah, twelve twenty-eight is the, the smallest square footage of, of those. And so we would hope that we would be able to offer that plan. Provides more options, provides more character in the neighborhood.
Are you good with twelve hundred then?
No, twelve twenty-eight.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, does the-
Just out of curiosity, that, that smallest plan, does that have a larger option? Like with a second floor, or is it just, it is what it is?
It's a ranch.
That is-
It's a ranch, yeah.
Okay.
One floor.
Well, he, he was saying that a, a lot of the plans that they have are available either as ranches or one and a halfs or two stories.
Yeah, yeah.
So I was wondering if that was one of the-
Okay.
That one's just a branch.
Okay.
Just a ranch.
Those four.
Okay, does the commission have any more stipulations or items they'd like to address? All right? Members of the public, last call? All right, then can I have a motion by the commission?
You got it. I don't have the script.
Okay. Regulations to recommend approval of zoning application number Z O N dash twenty-five dash oh-three of shift properties with modifications. Motion by Captain Foster to recommend to the Board of Township Trustees, the board, the approval with modifications of zoning application numbers zone, uh, number Z O N dash twenty-five dash oh-three of shift properties, the pages of which are each stamped received with Orange Township Zoning on seven one twenty-five requesting the amendment of the currently effective development plan for a property owned by NFMS LLC. Application number Z O N dash twenty-two dash oh-nine upon, upon finding that it is in the interest of the public, convenience, comfort, prosperity, or general welfare, or sufficiently in accordance with the comprehensive plan, including additional modifications as listed below. The applicant shall, um, shall obtain approvals for the site plan from Orange Township Fire Department prior to approval of the zoning by Board of Trustees. Number two, the cluster mailbox location should be revisited for an appropriate location to prevent the traffic. I'm kind of working there. Six-foot priv, installation of a six-foot privacy fence along the railroad. And also, we have the fire department approval.
Square footage.
The square footage being minimum twelve twenty-eight, yes.
One possible correction is the plans were revised on seven eight. The motion pointed to seven oh-one.
Right, because that's what staff gave me to go by.
Seven one.
Yeah, that's what staff gave us.
Okay, even though the paperwork's been updated since then, okay.
I'm confident that Robin has the correct-
Yes.
-preamble to the motion.
Okay.
And then we have the three stipulations, the fire department, the cluster mailbox, the privacy fence, and the minimum square footage.
Yep.
All right, can I have a second?
I second.
All right, can we have a vote, please?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Bellis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Sundar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
Wish you well and looking forward to seeing your progress.
Yes, we understand that it is, as you would say, a downzoning. At least in my mind, an improvement to what was previously zoned for the property.
It's the first downzoning I've done. Last time I didn't want to ask you.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right, uh, looks like there is other business before the commission, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Bellis, and I apologize again. I am very mad at sending out the meeting minutes for you to review beforehand through electronic mail. They are printed out in front of you. If you had the chance to review them before the meeting, if you are comfortable on voting to approve the meeting minutes from the previous June meeting, then feel free to do so. If you would rather take more time to review them and review and approve them at the next meeting, then we can do that as well.
Since it's actually the minutes from the previous discussion we had on this exact same site, I believe a lot of us have been able to review them to refresh our memory as to what was discussed at our last meeting. I have no issues with approving them. How does the rest of the commission feel?
I, I reported to Rob, and there's a typo in there that he's going to correct. Otherwise, I'm, I'm good with it.
All right, are we good as well?
I'm good with it.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June tenth, twenty twenty-five, Z O N dash two-five dash oh-three?
So moved.
Can I have, okay, thank you.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Bellis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Sundar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Is there any other business before the commission?
I will just remind you that we do have a meeting scheduled for next week, Tuesday the fifteenth, at six thirty P M. If you're not able to make that meeting, please let me know if you have not done so already.
And I will let you know tomorrow.
Thank you. And then one general announcement. The Board of Trustees has scheduled their first hearing for the draft zoning code. That is Wednesday, the twenty-third, at six P M. Just so you all are aware, I imagine there will be more than one hearing with the trustees. But just to let your knowledge, that ball is moving on the table.
Okay.
They needed some reading, huh?
Yes.
I'm going to go ahead and put that on my schedule, so I have it. All right, if there's no more business before the convention, then I will say, meeting adjourned.